There they are. I've asked them to turn their cameras on.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone, everybody. This is the May 5 Cinco de Mayo meeting for Lone Star College. It is now, let's see, it is now 5:02 and the chair calls this meeting to order. If you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. With the next item with this certification of post of the workshop, just want to make sure and take a roll call on this. So we'll start with the folks joining us virtually. Trustee Pierce.
Present.
Trustee Ayers Wilson.
Yeah.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Thank you. And then here we have, let's see, trustee Stoma.
I'm present.
Trustee Mario.
Present.
And trustee Kane.
Present.
And trustee Bo. Thank you, sir. He is here. All right. Next item, the certification of the posting of the regular meeting. Dr. Head, has the meeting notice been properly posted and certified?
Yes, I certified. It was posted in accordance with the law.
Thank you, sir. At this time, Desiree, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Dr. John Bergdoff.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening for the Cinco de Mayo. I am Dr. John Bergdoff, president of AFT Lone Star College, and thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. Tonight, I want to thank the many Lone Star College faculty, staff, administrators, and students who participated in AFT's Let's Stop COVID LSC pledge drive. As you know, our union started this campaign to urge everyone to voluntarily take action to keep themselves and others safe as we tried to make it fun at the same time. Although the need to stay vigilant remains, the official part of our campaign has drawn to a close, and I want to report back on the results. The union prepared a short video about our Let's Stop COVID campaign, and Desiree and her staff have very graciously offered to show that for us tonight. So magical powers up in the universe, can you play the video? Great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. As you saw in the video, ultimately over 1,500 people signed our pledge. We believe we were successful in raising awareness and creating a more positive narrative, at least among the Lone Star community. In the process, we had the privilege and joy of connecting with many, many people that make Lone Star great, both our employees and our students. At the end of the campaign in mid-April, we hosted a huge online celebration over Zoom for all the employees and students who signed our pledge. We had prize giveaways, we showed our video, and we even had live music performed by up-and-coming local band Lucid Illusions. The lead singer for the band completed his first two years of college right here at Lone Star, and his mother is both on the faculty and in our union. We think this may be the first time that a local of the AFT has produced a rock concert. At this point in the pandemic, everyone feels safer, which is great, and the need for precautions has lessened. However, if more surges come, we urge everyone to remember our pledge and voluntarily recommit to the six safety protocols we highlighted in our campaign. Wash your hands, maintain social distance, wear a mask, stay home if you feel sick, get vaccinated if it's medically possible for you to do so, and encourage others to take the pledge. Sooner or later, we will get completely to the other side of this pandemic. We will be glad that we did our part to help each other. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Thank you so much for creating that program, Lone Star. It's pretty awesome that you got over 15,000 signatures for the pledge. Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen.
Fifteen hundred. Well, this is, it's really good. I mean, I think just, I know that the pandemic is kind of slowing down and our numbers are down according to DHS and the state of Texas. So thank you for working on that as well. Any other folks joining us that would like to place a comment?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay. So our next slide is the introduction and special getting recognition.
So I want to introduce Valerie Jones, who is on the agenda tonight for ratification of the, to be the new president of Cyfair. So Valerie, if you would stand up and I think she met everybody except trustee Bo, who just, he's on the end down there. He's from the Woodlands area, Woodlands, Montgomery campus area. So I think everybody else met her, right? Okay. And she'll be introduced later again, and her name will be on the ratification on item 19. So thank you, Valerie. Anybody else, Desiree?
No, sir.
Okay.
At this time, trustees, our next item is the approval of the minutes of the April 7, 2022 workshop and regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. So may I have a motion in a second?
So.
Perfect. It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Right. Motion passes. Thank you. Special reports and announcements.
We've got a couple of updates for the board. If we could go to the next slide, please. This is where we are with enrollments, and we're keeping close tabs on this. I'm actually encouraged by the results. So in the summer, or where we are, in the summer, we still have, I think, about 30 days left before the summer session starts. But we are actually up in student count and in credit hours, and that's, that's a positive. Keep in mind, I keep going back to two years ago when we were down about 30% this time, a couple of years ago. And I'm looking at the fall, our numbers are getting better steadily. We have a long way to go. We still have four months to go before the start of the fall semester, but we're trending in the right direction. I will say that. We're working hard. We've got a major marketing effort underway. And so the students are beginning to come back, and then we're just getting out about, and as John mentioned, you know, the threat of COVID, the way we knew it before, is abating. And so we'll see. We monitor this every single day. And let's go to the next slide. So the budget update is this. We are, we continue to work on the budget, and we've got a couple of dates up here, important dates. But remember, on June the 16th, we have a budget workshop with the board. Well, we'll go back through a number of the items that we had talked about before. But these enrollments are key to us. Keep in mind that generally, every percentage point up or down is 1.2 million. And so I did want to point out that we have received the preliminary tax valuations. And some of you are aware of this, that in Montgomery County, they generally were up about 30%. And in Harris County, we're up about 15%. Now, we're capped at eight with owned old property. New property is exempted from that. We just don't know yet. What we're trying to figure out is, we don't have it broken down into what old property and new property or existing property and what new, new property would be. So again, we're capped at eight. So anything that's over eight with old property, the, if we go above 8%, then we subject ourselves to a rollback vote. And so we'll take a look at that. Once we have more information, I think by June the 16th, I think we'll be a little clearer. Jennifer, I'm looking at you, and by June the 16th, we should be a little clearer. So we'll know whether the options are, one of the options is to possibly reduce taxes, given the growth in assessed value. You all are seeing what we're looking at in the, in the newspapers. And we've been taking a look at different options, which we'll be discussing with the board, what those options might be if, if we think the money is there, whether there be a tax decrease or an increase in exemptions or how that might be, or a combination of those. So we are aware of all the issues around all that. We just don't know right now. We can't make a recommendation because we just don't know how that plays out. So. So on the state, the state is, the state is, they're going into the state legislative session, and we've already started having meetings about how that might look. And the state's very optimistic. I will tell you, and I put the Finance Commission update because the two are related. There is money for community colleges, but there's a lot of what we're hearing and what I've been told by a number of legislators towards, there is money there available for community colleges if, if they have a proposal that makes sense. And what they're really counting on is, and they're looking at outcomes, not just giving money, which has been one of our positions over the last, at least while I've been the chancellor, we've been saying that we're in favor of student success points or performance funding or outcomes-based, not just giving money for the sake of giving money. Now, one of the things that I've been, in my, in my position, I'm the head of one of the committees, is we'd like the formula funding where we get rewarded based on credit hours or contact hours. That's important to us because that rewards growth, which is important if you're going to do that. But we also like the performance funding, which we also like because we do well in that and we help put together some of those plans. Then my, my own personal view on this, and I've expressed it to legislators, if you want to, if you want to set goals at the state level over, over what you're going to reward, whether that be students finishing developmental or moving through course sequences or even transferring, that's where you want to put some money and reward the colleges. Don't penalize anybody, but just reward the colleges that meet those goals. Now, the big issue and what's being discussed is the focus started out with the Finance Committee. It is about outcomes, but it's also about workforce. How do you, how do you, you know, I mentioned to you before that we've got a popular, major population shift that's impacting at least half the state. And the state wants to get people trained, and workforce could be current workforce programs or people that just get degrees. They both go into the workforce. Workforce is in the broadest sense. So we think that one of this, one of the ideas under consideration is for the coordinating board to have a stronger role in finance and have incentive money and give colleges incentives for reaching certain goals. In other words, they would set the goals, they give incentive money. This is a bigger issue really for, no matter what the plan is, I think Lone Star is going to be fine as long as we have the, the current formula is not broken, but it is, needs tweaking. And what we, what we know is the rural colleges, the rural colleges are the ones that need the most assistance. So that's the challenge over this. If you want to give everybody an equal opportunity, how do you help some of the rural colleges? You could do that in some of the funding formulas that we're looking at. And we've looked at about 15 different states that way. The way they do this is if you're going to give formula funding and you give it on credit hours and student success points, then you, you add weighted in there for rural colleges, for example, or you set up a special fund. We spend a lot of time talking about shared services. That doesn't, we would be one of the people that would provide the shared services because we have the capacity to do this in a couple of different areas. Like if sooner or later, as we go out for a new ERP system, we have, we will have the capacity to have other colleges tag in with us if they pay their share. But our, my discussions, and we talked to a lot of small colleges, the coordinating board needs to be the broker in this. They need to make those arrangements. In other words, you would contract with the coordinating board, not with Lone Star necessarily. And then the coordinating board would, the coordinating board might put out an RFP about who's interested in this, and then they would be contacting us beforehand and say, can you provide these services? There's a couple of them that can. There are some consortia already, but the coordinating board needs to put up money for that because they don't have the, they're not as advanced as we are. Same thing on some of the workforce programs, some of the HR programs. Just, just generally, a lot of this is technology. But we had a meeting this week, and we talked, us in Austin this week, and talked to some of the smaller colleges about how they, so how do you fund workforce programs? Because in our case, it's 500,000 at a minimum, and some of these are multimillion-dollar over years programs. And the two, two of the colleges on the, on the, on the Zoom said, well, they talk to high schools first and see if they have the equipment that they can borrow. And I thought, well, okay, that's not what we do. It'd be if they had the only equipment around, yeah, we do. But you see where we are. What happens is the more you're in these meetings, the starker the contrasts are between what Lone Star, Dallas, even Houston, Tarrant, Alamo, there's about six of us that can provide these services that are the people who can't. And I've sent you the numbers already about how many small colleges there are. So it's a, it's a challenge. I'll say that. I think we're making progress. I think I should start seeing some recommendations pretty soon. I'll keep the board updated over this. I think any, no matter which way we go, we're going to be fine as long as the basic formula stays the same and we get rewarded on our size and our growth, which I think we should. So I mean, the option on that is if they start taking money away and redistributing, which has been vetoed by everybody on that committee and the Lieutenant Governor's Office and the Governor's Office, so they're not in favor of that, then I just think we're going to be fine. So, next slide. So this is the, I've got the dates for the graduation, but I'm pretty pleased about this. That means we've got people finishing. So we're up 180 or so, something like that, and the number of graduates that we're expecting. Next slide. So these are the important dates, starting Thursday of next week. We have, and I think all the board members, you've been sent notes by Desiree. You might want to take a look at that. If anything changes, you might want to let us know. That's Thursday, the 12th, I believe. 13th is on a Friday, and 14th is on a Saturday. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, plus the bachelor's degree. So we've got eight graduations. So there's no expectations of anybody in this room that you hit anywhere close to all of them. We, most of you have chosen one or two of them, which we appreciate. And then same thing with the administrators. I did want to point out that we have a, Mario's putting on a legal conference on May the 20th. And this is really for the state. I know a couple of board members. I think trustee Sullivan and trustee Ayers Wilson have said that they would like to attend, but Lone Star is a leader in a lot of different things. So this is for Texas residents, and Mario's expecting about 80 people to show up. But we've been talking about having one nationwide. There are some colleges that have the space and the wherewithal to put on these national conferences also. But I think this is really good. We like having this. It, it, first of all, we, we know what we're talking about, and we'll bring other people in, other speakers. But we like being with our size and what we can do. We like hosting these kind of meetings. Plus, we have the facilities to do it. Last thing I have on my item is keep in mind, June the 16th, we'll send out a number of emails, just making sure that you just got this on your, and you're thinking that on the regular board meeting. And then right after this, I think trustee Sullivan's going to give you an update on redistricting meetings. But, so we have the regular board meeting on June the 16th, which I also think is a redistricting committee meeting day. And then we have the budget workshop on that day. So we'll send you more, more invites and calendar reminders about these important meetings that we have come up. Any questions about anything from my? I'm really, I'm optimistic about the way the, about a couple of things. I'm cautiously optimistic that we're turning the tide in the enrollment piece, getting students back. And I think all of us are feeling more comfortable about being out and, and even with COVID period. And then I think that with what's going on at the state, if we, if the community colleges can come to some agreement, which I think we can, I've been talking to the leaders of different organizations also, including the coordinating boards. We've got a couple of different meetings to get three or four of us in the meeting and see if we can come to some agreement and present a united front to the legislature at this time, which we have not done in a couple of years. So.
What I like about those type of meetings is they look to us, correct, Dr. Head? And like what, you know, what we kind of recommend.
Being large has its advantages. I'll say that. But it's, what's happening is that Tarrant has a new chancellor. Or they have, they don't have a chancellor right now. They have an interim chancellor. And then Dallas has a brand-new chancellor. And so there's only a couple of us who've been around for a while that know the history of, that we're down to two or three people that have been around for more than 10 years. Actually, more than five years. We're like major league managers. There's only a few of us that have been through maybe two sessions. I think only two of us. So we at least know how the system works and what ought to be done. So.
Thank you, Dr. Head, for always advocating for us. Board members, do we have any reports or comments at this time? You would like to share with us? I do have a couple of reports. I know that this week we were invited to the Houston Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, which was a State of Hispanics data summit. I think trustee Mario was also at the event. So would you like to say?
Sure. It's an opportunity for us to kind of get a sense of the economic conditions. And it also is an opportunity to hear from our partners throughout the region. I know our chancellor is a integral part of various partnerships in the chamber. So keeps it updated on, on everything that's going on. But what's really changed or what's really hopeful is the fact that, thanks, because COVID, you know, things, things are getting better. We get to finally see some of the folks that we've been working with in the past. And, you know, it's always good to see some friendly faces and, and kind of start planning upcoming events. And, you know, just to get everybody's business card and make sure we, we stay in touch because the region, the whole idea of this, the presentations, this whole content, this whole theme was, was understanding the regional implications about the economy. And of course, higher education always plays a key role. And, and also, college is a huge part of that, as we know. So, so it's great to see everybody out there again. So.
And I know that the Hispanic Chamber always recognizes Lone Star College.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. So really good.
Melissa Gonzalez, Dr. Gonzalez is also present as well. So that's always, I thought was helpful.
Thank you, trustee. I do like to say just a couple of things. So I, I follow Lone Star College through social, social media. And so one of them, I've noticed that Dr. Leannette had mentioned how Lone Star College students took top honors during the National Model United Nations Conference. So I think that's pretty cool. And then, let's see, the professor, Dr. Theis, and I'm sorry if not pronouncing.
Tyce.
Tyce. Thank you. Dr. Tyce.
Jay Tyce is his name. I think it's John officially, but he goes by Jay.
Okay, Jay. So he's the professor of political science and director of the Lone Star College Kingwood Center for Civic Engagement. So he has been named Fulbright Scholar. So that's really, really nice. And then lastly, I saw a little story about Hispanic outlook on education. So we were recognized as one of the top community colleges for Hispanics and Latinos. So that's really good news there. So thank you. Our next item is the redistricting update. And I think we have trustee Sullivan, who's going to give us an update on that.
And thank you, Chair Saldivar. First of all, let me apologize for not being there in person. I just was stuck on the wrong end of Houston traffic. So I ducked into an office to participate remotely. Otherwise, I would be there. So as a reminder to, to my colleagues and to the public, the redistricting committee is composed of trustees Ernestine Pierce, Art Mario, and myself. I want to first thank trustee Mario for attending the Kingwood Community Forum on April 6. In my absence, I was out of town on business. So I appreciate you driving over there and, and being a face to the audience for us. So thank you. We're making just great progress with redistricting. We're on track to finish on time to meet all our deadlines along the way. As a reminder too, the board decided, because there had been such little community input at our community meetings, to cancel the second round of community forums. That, of course, has been done. And the public can still, though, participate electronically. They can submit their comments or questions online to lonestar.edu backslash redistricting. They can also reach out to any trustee with their comments or concerns. So there's ample opportunity between now and the end of this process for the public to participate. So we only had one public comment, and that was addressed by our outside legal counsel, Thompson Horton. That's resolved. We now have a revised redistricting schedule. And that is in, let's see, can we pull that? Oh, yeah, there it is. Okay, so May 11th, that meeting has been canceled. The special board meeting on redistricting has been canceled once again because we're making such good progress. June 8th, we'll have the public final hearing, special board meeting. June 16th, the redistricting committee meeting. And June 29th, final map adoption. It also wants to report that outside legal counsel on redistricting, Thompson Horton, Ms. McBride, sent an email saying that the board has had asked for precinct analysis and retrogression analysis. That is in progress right now. The information should be back from the demographers hopefully by the close of business today, Thursday. So Friday, Ms. McBride might be in a position to report to, to the committee. The redistricting committee will evaluate that information. And then, of course, it'll be presented to the full board on June 8. So colleagues, if you have any questions, feel free to ask now or send me an email and I'll respond. Once again, I want to thank trustee Pierce and Mario for being available throughout this process, both for community forums and also by email.
Any questions? So hearing done. Thank you so much, Chairman Sullivan, for your service in this very important committee. So trustee here, Mr. Mario. Ms. Wilson, yes, ma'am.
I do have a question. I'm sorry. I was trying to unmute.
Oh, that's okay.
Trustee Sullivan, I do have a question with the, as far as the precinct maps. If they, when they draw up the precinct map and discover that the precincts are split like between our districts, then what would be the decision? Or would they leave it like that? Or would they have to remap or try to figure out just to keep the precincts from splitting? Did they discuss that or no?
They have not yet, trustee Wilson. They'll present that information. They're still evaluating it right now, and they'll present that to us as a committee. And then we, of course, can evaluate it, discuss it, and make a recommendation to the board. But one of our initial criteria, of course, one of our principles, was to keep precincts intact. So as much as that's going to be possible, Thompson Horton knows that as well as the demographers.
Right. I was just checking.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, nothing's going on in the background right now, just so you know. I know as much as you do right now on, on the precinct analysis. uh, I know as much as you do right now on, on the precinct analysis and we'll receive that information maybe tomorrow, but probably next week from Thompson Horton. And as soon as I see it, uh, it'll be kicked out to the redistricting committee.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you trustees. Our next item is the consideration of the consent agenda. Um, I know a couple of my colleagues have pulled, um, some items to be reviewed separately. And those are items 18, 19 and five. So trustees, at this time, do we have any other items that you would like to review separately?
I have a question. Um, the agenda item number, that was action item number two, last board meeting. Um, is that number 17?
Yes.
Okay. I was just wondering, cause it, you know, the numbers change.
Okay. So do you, um, do you want to review that separately or you just had that question?
I just wanted to make sure that was the one, because I knew they said they were putting it back on the agenda.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
I, I would like to have some discussion on, I think it was 10 or 13.
Trustee, so you want to review 10 and what, what number?
13.
10 and 13? All right. So then I have, just to make sure I have five, 10, 13, 18 and 19. All right. So at this moment, may I have a motion and a second to adopt items? One, two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16 and 17.
Stoma, so move.
I have a second. Moved improperly. Second, those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Madam Chair, I want for the record, this is trustee Pierce to note that, that I'm abstaining from voting to approve the full consent agenda, even with those pulled, because my reason again, that the documentation is presented in the action items are not clearly justified. Don't have enough information to make a yes vote. So I'm abstaining. Let the record show that, please.
Thank you trustee Pierce.
You're welcome.
Trustee Pierce abstains. Okay. Now let's go to each item. So may I have a motion and a second to consider item number five?
So move.
I have a second.
Yeah.
All right. Comments and questions?
I do. This is trustee Iris Wilson. Um, I see like, um, it's the Houston business development. I talked to, um, to Dr. Wright yesterday to try to get some clarification, because to me it's just not enough information, um, where you, especially when you're talking about $9,000 a month for 60 months. Um, and so the information I received from him does not truly reflect the information and partnerships that's in this agenda, uh, agenda, action item number five. Dr. Wright, if you are there, um, could you please come to the podium? I can't tell. Okay. I can't really tell. And the reason why is because the wording to me, um, is not how it, to me, is not reflective of what's really going on. And so, and you're talking about 9,000, $9,000. Um, I don't see like, there's no report to say, well, this is how we came to this number. This is how much it is per square foot. Um, what happens with this? Um, who are the partnerships with? What are they bringing, um, enhancing Lone Star? You know what I'm saying? The college with, the students with, um, but $9,000 a month is a lot of money. And I need to know where that money y'all have on this action item, if you don't mind.
He's got an overview, if that's okay with you. He can give the background information and I think answer your questions. So.
Right. But I need that information in my hand. We're talking about a 60-month deal. You, you understand what I'm saying? That, that, that wasn't presented before today for a review. And I don't feel comfortable voting on this without reviewing the numbers and have the paperwork in my hand. Or you know what I'm saying? I like that to actually review and look at these numbers. Is, is, is the reason why I'm, I'm questioning.
Okay. Thank you trustee Wilson. Dr. Wright, if you could just kind of let us know exactly, you know, any, any comments or behind that.
Well, thank you. I'll, I'll give you a, a brief overview. This, um, BAI is for Lone Star College to partner with the city of Houston's Complete Communities Initiative and Center Point Energy to be able to provide job training programs specifically within the field of energy. You're going to move forward with, uh, providing electrical technology, training so that people can be electricians and ultimately to be able to train individuals to be electric vehicle charging station installers will be the first within the state of Texas to be able to do so. This has been a great partnership. Center Point Energy is providing, uh, a million dollars to be a, so that way the, the building can be built to suit for us. They're also entering into a grant with us with Texas Workforce Commission to provide the matching funds to be able to cover the electric vehicle charging stations, which we're working towards. Uh, the city of Houston, the way this program came about, uh, back in 2017, Mayor Turner launched the Complete Communities Initiative to try to, uh, serve underserved communities. Uh, after about two years of meetings, uh, the community wanted to build an economic hub from a former Aldine ISD school that had closed. And so this economic hub would have things such as business information, job training, community resources, similar to what they have in Southeast Houston with the Palm Center. Uh, so it was a lot of community support that's behind it. Uh, but since then, the, the city has, uh, put 4.5 million dollars in a block grant to be able to re, to get, to get those facilities up. There was an earmark in the infrastructure bill for the federal government of $2 million. Uh, there's been over $9 million for different donations that's going to it. What we will be is in the job training wing of it. And that's what this program is about. We're excited. I've been, I've had the opportunity to serve on the customer service advisory board with Center Point. And we're very excited about this because we are going to be the first to be able to provide this electric vehicle charging station program. And the timing is perfect for us because Tech Dot just received $400 million from the federal government to be able to provide charging stations across the state, uh, which we will be able to, to participate in that. So that's kind of an overview of the program. The reason why this particular place was chosen, reason why Center Point has cited about it, uh, is because it gives us an opportunity to provide and training in an emerging field within the Aggris Homes community. And so it's very strong for economic development and that's, that's how we got to this point.
You have to pack a head something here. So this is a program that's unique. We do not have the capacity. We don't, we do not have the space at Victory to offer this program. And the, um, just on a personal note, the mayor of Houston called me a couple of times and asked me if we would participate if we could. So we've been working on this for about a year and we've taken a look at this, um, every which way we could. If we could offer it Victory, we would do that, but we don't have the capacity at Victory. And so, uh, most of this is going to be funded. The, the money that you're talking about is the lease space that we would have, which is in, in my mind is cheaper than us building a facility. It's not a, um, open-ended agreement. So we'll see whether or not it's successful or not. Most of the funding for this, we'll have the lease, but the training and other, I believe there's grants coming to cover those costs. So, and at the end of the day, we'll receive money back on the backside of this for contact hours. So, uh, I do not anticipate us taking a loss in this, a financial loss, but I do think it's important that we get out front on the, uh, electrical vehicle. We've got a couple of, uh, agenda items that are tied to this program so that we can move forward with it. So, but again, the lease agreement, this is a lease agreement. And if it doesn't work out, and we'll probably give this two years or so. And if it doesn't work out, then we'll tell them thank you, but it's not going to work out for us. It's going to be another two years before we have any extension. The, uh, e- even right now, we don't have the space. We did not plan for this. This is just something that's come up. So I'll say it's come up, it's come up in the last year or so. We have a number of partnerships with the city of Houston. We do a lot of training for the city. And this is another one where they've reached out to us and asked us to help with this. It's about workforce development for us. Dr. Head? Yes.
As part of this lease agreement, is there a clause in the lease agreement? Let's say you got a, a year into it and you say this is not working out. Is there, is any type of termination clause in that agreement?
Mario, I'm looking at you. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. We don't sign agreements without out. So I'm not, do you know off the top of your head what that agreement is?
I can't hear. I'm sorry.
He's coming to the podium.
So the way it works is we usually don't get the agreements until after the board says to proceed. Otherwise it's a waste of legal resources. So we haven't seen the agreement or I haven't seen it at least yet. But it can very much contain that section if the approval is contingent on it containing that section.
So Mario, I assume, uh, chief legal counsel, you would, uh, look for that clause in there for some cancellation if we needed to. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We always have terminations, for example, for convenience, for not funding, for lack of performance. Um, and the legal department usually recommends year-to-year leases, which is, Dr. Wright is saying that this, the draft contains that.
And so we have the odds, we'll have the option to cancel if it doesn't work out.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Dr. Wright, let me ask you another question, sir, if you don't may, if you don't mind. So as part of this lease agreement, you get some type of, how should I say? You have some requirements of how you want to use that space that they, they are fulfilling, right? So you could not only lease the space, but you get to be able to shape that space. Is that correct?
We are, and that's the advantage of this, because to be able to build out electric vehicle charging stations, it takes a lot of power. And so we have submitted four plans for it to be built out and the renovation itself is being paid for by Center Point.
So it's more than just the lease. I mean, you're getting some value here in, in the build out. Is that correct?
We are, we are, because we build it to suit the programs, which is great. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Just, I just want to say thank you so much for working on this. I know this is with a whole new electric vehicle stuff. It just seems like it's really getting ahead, especially in the state of Texas, where we're still reliant on oil and gas. So thank you so much, sir. Okay. Um, if I, we can have a roll, roll call vote for number five, item number five. Now I'll start with, um, trustee Pierce.
I will abstain until I want to see the contract in writing. Can we get that? The specifics, it's one thing to talk it, but I'm like trustee Wilson. Can we get that in writing so that we can really look at it? And even if there's a draft of the lease, I, I don't think that the board can approve something. At least I will not approve anything that I can't see. I'd like to see that in writing since there are questions. So I'm going to say no at this point.
Okay. So no, or are you abstaining?
I'm going to say no until I get the contract in writing so I can review it. Cause you know, we are fiduciaries of taxpayer money. So I want to be sure that I'm on the right side of this.
Thank you trustee Pierce. Um, trustee yours, Wilson.
I have a question before I vote, if that's okay. I wasn't, I wasn't, I was trying to unmute, but you moved on.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so let's say that this is approved and we get the contract and we don't like the terms in agreement. Um, are you all going to go back to the table to re redo the terms? Or you, you understand what I'm saying? Like what, what is, what's the, in like the, if this doesn't work, then what? Have y'all thought about that?
So typically, I don't know if someone can answer that for us. So typically what, what normally does happen whenever we go on contracts?
Mario's coming back up.
Okay, no problem.
So the way it works is usually the day after the board approves the deal, I guess in principle, OGC will deliver, OGC, the office of the general counsel will receive a draft of the contract. And that's the first time that the legal department really gets its hands on it. We start modifying, editing it, and then there, we go back and forth, sometimes for weeks, sometimes for months, just depending on what the disagreement is about. And then at some point, there's always an impasse in every sort of contractual negotiation. And then at the impasse, then we bring them to Dr. Head. Dr. Head, as the chief executive officer tells us, uh, what those decisions are so long as they don't contradict anything in the board agenda item. Uh, the office of the general counsel proceeds with what we call a variance and then they go out for signature.
How many of these contracts do we have each year?
Almost 2,000, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's fine. But that's not my, I'm not talking about what, what we normally have. I'm talking about this contract in particular. Um, and also I wanted to say, because this agenda item, action item number five, five years down the line after this, this 60 months or, or when some other new people come and they look at this or somebody pulls this, this, what, what was just presented is not reflective and was this an action item? And that's my theme. Wording is so important. If you say this is going to be a, uh, with Center Point Energy, um, in the city of Houston, complete, complete communities, that needs to be listed in this agenda item for record. Um, you can't, I, I, I just, I just, I can't vote for something that's not, I'm, I'm having to ask the question to see, okay, now what is this really about? You, you understand what I'm saying? It needs to be worded in this agenda item and I need to see that draft. So as far as the vote, my vote is I'm abstaining and I need to see that draft.
Okay. Thank you trustee Wilson. You abstained. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Trustee Stoma.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee vote.
Aye.
Trustee Mario.
Aye.
Trustee Kane.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Um, it passed. Thank you so much. Our next item is item number 10. So have, may I have a motion in a second?
So move. Second.
Second Sullivan.
Thank you so much. Been moved improperly. Second, any comments or questions?
Yes. In the, in looking at the, at the, um, m- matrix for the, for scoring the applications on this, I see that we've got, um, only two of the applicants showing anything under the HUD plan and, and that the, the top two applicants were pretty close as far as their numbers.
Jennifer, can you come up, please?
And I guess the, the questions I, that I have is, in a situation where the scoring is, could be easily tipped by, one, s- something such as the, uh, having a five score on the HUD plan. How, how are we determining that indeed they're, they're complying with the requirements of the HUD, HUD plan?
What, so for the HUD plans, uh, the respondents, if they are a HUD themselves, they have to provide us with the HUD certification, uh, that show, that displays that they have that certification. Uh, that is what could potentially earn someone the full five points. If they are not themselves a HUD, then they have to submit a proposed subcontracting plan. And it's usually the proposed subcontracting plan that may then award some of the, when you see partial points.
Okay. So if, if we're seeing that they're, they're getting five points, then that means that, that they're a recognized HUD.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Okay. And do we do follow-up to ensure that the HUD plan, if they submitted a subcontractor, is actually followed?
Uh, we generally will do spot checks and we also include within the RFPs and within the contracts, penalties if they are not meeting the subcontracting plan.
Okay. Okay. I, I just bring that up because I face that in, in, in my business. Okay, I just bring that up because I face that in, in, in my business. And sometimes the, the, the hub just doesn't work. And things get changed up. I wanted to ask about that. So that's, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you.
I will say, we've talked about this quite a few times. And we want to talk to the board about this as we get into the summer, when we talk about how we want to handle things in the future. Because these HUD votes, I mean, there's a couple of things in there. We change the votes periodically, the points. The, the point system that we have, we would like for the board to review that. And either you're on board with that or you want to change it, but we were planning on doing that this summer. We had actually planned on doing it during, before COVID came along, to review all that and make, make sure that that makes sense, whether it be five points or 10 points, and go back and forth. And then maybe even review with you how we do this. How many, just, I know we've got 2,000 of these contracts, but how many vendors do we actually have? Do you know off the top of your head? Several thousand?
I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Quite a few vendors that we, I mean, unless we assign somebody full-time to check on all this stuff all the time, if somebody reports something, we do, that's the reason we do spot checks. I do think it's worth a conversation with the board, though, about the point system. Because to me, we can, we, all we're doing right now, and we have, Jennifer and I and the board don't get involved ultimately in any of the points. We're completely out of that. So for us, it's just a matter of following the guidelines. I mean, that's what the staff do. And so we've got different levels of approvals on this. In other words, Jennifer and I don't get involved. We've got committees that do this and grant these points. So whatever the board decides to be fair on the points, we're fine with that. But we just need to make sure that it's, we're consistent with it. It's fair. We can justify whatever the decision is.
Can I, this is trustee Ayers-Wolson. So, or, so the, the company pre-employ is the company that got selected, right? But they're a hub playing zero. Did they submit something to say that they work with contractors that have, you know what I mean?
Jennifer's looking up some, we've had a couple of issues even that came before the board where somebody got zero for hubs, but the person that was representing them was actually a minority, but that's not the way the scoring goes. So, and we've got a, we've got a, we've had a couple of issue, or instances of that. It doesn't show up in that scoring, but they could be hiring somebody else and subcontracting to answer a question that are minorities. We don't monitor it in that way.
But I think we need to come up with a plan to start because we want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence because you all are asking us to approve these large sums, amounts of money for a longer, a long time period, you know what I'm saying, sometimes? And we want to make sure that they're abiding by our rules and recommendations and regulations. So that's very important that we, we figure out a way to get, make sure, you know what I'm saying? So we don't, we, so we're not overlooking someone who might, could actually do the job that, that, that fits all the criteria. You know what I'm saying?
So I agree. I, one of the challenges we've had is, and I agree with you. A lot of the smaller companies would qualify for hubs, and they are. The issue with us, whether it be painting, or landscaping, or just about any of the work, they normally need to complete it in a short period of time, but they don't have the staff to do it. This is one of the things we want to talk with you about when we actually meet over how we can get, I, I think all of us that live in our area would like to engage more of our smaller businesses. And the way things, right now, under the policies that we have and the practices that we have, it doesn't lend itself to a lot of small businesses. And normally, if we needed a building painted, for example, we need to have it done over in a week's period, or during the break, or over a weekend, or something. Most small companies can't do that, and that rules out a lot of the smaller companies, minority-owned companies. So the other thing I would add is, we are part of the city, of the counties. We're taking a look at the number of vendors in the Houston metropolitan area, minority vendor. And we'll see, what we want to do is see the number of the vendors that are out there, and then see what we're doing, and then we can come back. And we're not going to have that until August and see what our aspirational goals might be. What is our, if that's what we want to do. But I, we need the board, I mean, clearly, that's a board decision over that, and we can provide all the information in the background.
Right.
We're going to have a future discussion on this.
Yeah, I, I think it's a longer discussion. It's a good decision. I mean, it's a good discussion to have, and we're in favor. We just need some board direction from the administration over how you want to handle some of this.
But I do have some questions, just real quick before we move on this. Like typically, we talk about rules, regulations, and, and practices and policies. So this is hub funds, correct? I mean, we're receiving some type of funds from hub or no?
No, no, these are not hub funds. This is part of the scoring system that we use for selecting our vendors, where we are giving points in our selection process to firms that are a minority vendor.
I think it's historically underutilized business, which could be women, could be black, could be Hispanic, it could be Asian, could be one of those, so.
Understood. Thank you.
So let's see if I can understand. So you, you historically have chosen hub businesses. Is that correct to do this? Perform this service?
No, not necessarily. It depends on how the points come out. We just go by the points.
I see. Okay.
Right.
It's one of the, if you look at the, the tabulations, it's one of several criteria that are, get factored into the ultimate selection.
Well, we'll do a deep dive of that at some point. What, what are the quick question? Why don't you use DPS? Don't you use Department of Public Safety? I mean, go on there and type in their information, get a report back in like 30 seconds. Criminal report.
For a minority, you mean, for?
Anybody. I'm going to count with them. I'm going to go. Yeah. For criminal background. I'm talking criminal background. That's what this is about, right? Criminal background. No.
This is about, no. So this is about whether or not the company leadership and the people involved directly in the managing of the leadership qualify under what normally would be either, or historically underutilized business, are they Hispanic, are they black, are they Asian, are they women? We've got criteria that we use. So that's what, that's, the background checks are a separate issue, but this particular issue, the points, on this particular issue, I think what trustee vote was talking about is what, how that factors in. Because these are pretty close. Most of these are pretty close. They could go either way with hubs. If, I mean, we tell our vendors right now, you would get more votes, or higher points if you are. We're encouraging diversity in our business, and that's where it shows up in the points, so.
I guess I'm just confused. This is, this is item 10, right? Or item 10. Says here, the board of trustees authorizes the chancellor designated to negotiate and execute contracts and amendments for criminal background check services from pre-employment.com.
Yeah, but he, I, I think he was, but, yeah, so that's one issue. That's not the, that, that in itself is an issue. We have, we run background checks like you're talking about. But he was talking about the points and how they come out on hub, on the.
For scoring, though. Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying then.
Is that correct?
But we'll get a schooling on that.
But background checks are more, are more inclusive than just criminal background.
Right. It just has criminal here, so.
Yeah.
Well, for every employee that's hired, and even if they're promoted within the system, every one of them, we run background checks.
Of course.
Right.
I say, that, that's what I, I'm just confused about because it states here, and for criminal background check services. And what you're speaking of is beyond, it's, it's bigger than that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and I would, and, and my, my, my point was that getting, getting the hub in there because they're so close in the, in the, in the totals, can make a difference real easily to, you know, who, who gets the.
You'll see a lot of these. If you take a look at the points, as we go through, the, the hubs make a difference in many cases, whether or not they get. I mean, for the most part, unless we have some reason, and I can't tell you the last time we did this. We go by the points. That's the only way I know how to do it and be fair about it. Instead of us going in and going, well, you got more, you got more higher rating, but trustee Stoma didn't, but we like you. So we don't do that. We don't, we just go by the point. We come to you with the point.
I got it. I mean, that's true.
Yeah.
But I, also, I was concerned on this one. And maybe, maybe it's just the way the, the matrix is set up, and it comes like this. But the, the successful point gatherer is only, is, is just tipping over 80%, you know, 80%. And, and I would think that that's indicating to me, yeah, they're pretty good, better than the rest of them, but.
But I think.
You know, they're not 100%.
In that particular case, did we not, those are just people, we took the top, is this the one where we took the top four, so the top five?
Yes, on this one, there was an initial evaluation of the proposal. So the individual committee members scored the proposals, and then it's the average of, of each individual scores that results in the evaluation tabulation. And the top five moved on to an interview phase. And then there was additional scoring at that interview phase. And then at the end, we do a combined average of the proposal scores and the interview scores to come up with the combined scores.
And, and this, those five then became the ones that you'll, you'll call when you have somebody, you, you pick a, pick up the phone and call one of the five. Is that right? Or?
No, there are other instances where we recommend a pool. In this instance, we, and, and as we do in other cases as well, are recommending a contract with the top scorer.
Okay, this, in this case, we are going with the top scorer.
Yes.
Yes, and, and yes, they are close, but we, as Dr. Head said, we do it by the points. Because even, even when it's close, that seems the fairest way to do that is to simply go by who has the highest points.
Yeah, but I'm disappointed that they didn't get more points. They, they, they didn't impress the, the scoring a little, you know, a little higher. I mean, that's, that's an important.
We, we've had this exact same discussion, but we, the way we have it set up, layered, we don't, again, we stay out of this administratively. And so we've got different people on different committees that come to the, I mean, it's basically a consensus over who would be the choice. I mean, however you want to do it. Again, I think that's the reason we want to have a discussion with you. If you want to take a look at the points in the system, then we can change the system. For us, it's really, I, I think, looking at examples at other systems and other entities, we want to keep this as clean and as transparent as we possibly can. And so if somebody's got ideas about how to do it a different way, we're okay with that. We just need to know what that, what that might be. We just want to follow the process. To me, that, that's the administration's job over these selections. And people can always, if they don't like what we're doing, they can appeal that, and we would take a look at it. We don't have too much of that. Usually, it's the, the, the facts are the facts. That's the way we've been looking at it.
And in terms of getting 100, I might mention that because this is an aggregation of many different criteria that's laid out in the tabulation, the, the numbers, it doesn't work out the same as you might think in a grade school of A, B, C, D, F. I think I, I could go back and pull the data, but generally, we see the scores in the 70s and 80s, on occasion in the low 90s. I, I will say, I don't think I've ever seen anyone score a full 100 on these tabulation criteria, scoring.
Any other questions?
I just want to make a quick comment. I think it is also important, and Dr. Head, I think I'm glad you encouraged us to, to have this conversation. It's, it's important to stay on top of it. But my, my point is, is about the importance of communicating that criteria, you know, if, I think after a while, I think for a lot of folks, especially if you're in the business, it's kind of obvious, maybe, you know, what, how you, how you come up with those numbers and what, what gets weighted more and all that. And I know that's part of the training and education. But I think I just want to emphasize the importance of, of being very clear on each item. And because, you know, maybe they're not putting as much effort into one aspect of it. That's always important.
Thank you, trustee Mario.
Yeah.
Trustee vote, any further questions?
No, I look forward to that meeting when we go and talk about.
Absolutely. So just to make sure we're not, the item 10 is not, nothing about, you know, how, I guess, the numbers. This is just background checks and services, correct? That's what we're voting on. Okay. So let's do a roll call. Trustee Pierce?
I'm going to abstain because of all the questions. Now, I'm somewhat confused, so I will abstain from this.
Okay, thank you, trustee Ayers-Wolson.
I'm going to abstain because of the hub.
Okay, trustee Stoma?
Aye.
Trustee vote?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Mario?
Yes.
Trustee Kane?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Item number 10 passes. Our next one is number 13. I have a motion in a second.
So move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, perfect. We moved improperly second. Any comments or questions on number 13?
That was me again.
Yes, sir.
And and I, I can't find it on this screen. My, my, my issue is, and I'm not sure if it's showing up in, in this one or not.
Do you want to pull it up online? I mean.
Trustee, you had one question when you called about why we only had one, was that, was that the issue that we only had one bidder?
Yeah.
Okay, so one of the whomevers, either Jennifer or we can just have a process over that. A good question, so.
Yes, I would say that is not the case for this particular agenda item.
It's really number, if you took a look at it, it's number 14, but the, the bigger issue is why we only had one bidder, right?
Right.
And we've had that more than once, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, in terms of the process, when we have the public bid events, it is publicly posted. We advertise in the Houston Chronicle and the, it is the African American News. So we run advertisements in those two newspapers. We also have any vendors who are set up with Lone Star College registered as a vendor, and we have them categorized by commodity code. So if they fit the commodity code of what the bid event is, then the email address that that vendor has on file with us, they will receive an email of the publicly bid event. So we do try to get it out, all of our public bid events as much as we can. And so we usually have lists of vendors that it gets emailed to, plus the public advertisements. So yes, on tonight's agenda, I believe there's two items. There have been on prior agendas, agendas that are on occasion solicitations where we do only receive one bidder. It doesn't, clearly, it doesn't happen all the time, but it's not completely infrequent either. And a lot of that is not necessarily within our control as to who chooses to submit a proposal.
So when you're, in reviewing this, I realized, we're talking about item 13, but in general, we're talking about one where they have one bidder. And we had, I think we sent notices to 14 or 15 people saying that were on that list, on that list that you showed me.
It depends on which one. I have a different list for each one in here. It, it depends on how many vendors we have registered
Right.
within that commodity code. So I had some lists that were pages long. There was one list that was one page long. So there, it does depend as to which item we would be looking at.
I think in the item you originally brought up, there were 14 or 15 people that we sent notes to, or we, we notified them that you could bid on this.
Do you get verification of receipt of those notifications?
We don't. I mean, it's whatever email address that particular vendor chose to enter into our system when they registered as a vendor.
But even sending an email, you can request acknowledgement of receipt.
We can do that. I would have to check if we actually do that, but I believe it also depends on the other email system, whether it would do that or not, or if they even. do that or not, or if they even click that.
We can start.
If they choose to do that, they don't, they don't have to.
Right.
One of the reasons I bring this up again is that in particular, if you're, if in a, a particular type of project, if you're not getting if you're not getting enough bidders, then there might be something wrong with your reputation in that, in that area. There's got to be a reason that if you're getting your, your, your RFPs out and getting them in their hands, there's got to be a reason you're not getting more than one bid.
Yeah, it's difficult. I do believe in my experience, because we're not speaking to, sort of, we're on agenda item thirteen at the moment. In general, I believe it depends on the solicitation. Reputation could certainly be part of it. Also, the size of the market itself for the commodity that are the good or service that we're searching for, if it's not a very deep market there as well. I know in addition, when we were doing some construction ones recently, and we reached out asking, some of the responses were simply that we're too busy. So I do think it depends on the situation, and not that that, what you are stating about concerns of reputation could be.
Well, could be.
Could be there, but that's where perhaps we could speak to at another time, a specific instance that we could dig into the particulars of that situation. It's hard to speak to here when we're discussing agenda item thirteen.
Yeah, it's fair to say the more, the larger the project, the more bidders we have. Let's put it that way. So we have a lot of smaller projects. And I know that, looking at this item and the number, the different one, it's for five hundred thousand dollars, but that's for a lot of contractors, it's not that, it's not that big of a deal, right? I mean, it is a lot, I know it's a lot of money. It's taxpayer, I know it's a lot of money, but for some of the the people that might be bidding, that's the margin there is not that, not that great when they've got other business.
Yeah.
Precisely, because there's, there's a cost to bidding, right?
Oh, yeah.
You know, you have to spend time and money to bid this, and a lot of the smaller firms don't have the, the time or the money and the personnel to do it. That's the reason they don't bid. I mean, that's what I, from the other side, just my opinion.
Any further questions, Dr.?
Chair Saldivar, Mike Sullivan.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Can I have the floor for a moment?
Yes, please.
Okay, good, thank you. I have to take exception to Trustee Boat's comment about maybe people aren't bidding because of our reputation. Our reputation is stellar, and I think that what Trustee Stoma said and what Jennifer Mott said are logical, reasonable explanations. I'm a private sector guy. I'll tell you, it's hard to get people to bid projects right now. Contractors are busy. Suppliers are shorthanded. Chain supply issues and problems are causing businesses and contractors not to commit. So there's a lot to it. I don't think, under any circumstances, it's an issue of Lone Star's reputation not being good. We pay our bills. We're the largest in the state, third or fourth largest in the country. We have stable leadership. We've got a great board of trustees. And I'll leave it at that. But anyway, y'all just keep up the good work at Lone Star, because we're, we're knocking it out of the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Trusty Sullivan.
I did, I, I did not mean to cast aspersions on Lone Star. I, I just picked the easiest one to say, but there are a number of different reasons that, that contractors turn their backs on good, good work.
And if, if I may, and if, I mean, I was at a small business networking meeting last night, and, and the comments that usually come up from small businesses is that they want to partake in, in contracts, but they're, in their case, they're not big enough to, to get in there, and, and the cost of, of applying is a lot. And okay, so, because my question would be, if, if, I mean, of course, there's not, this thing is a stupid question. I think if, if, you know, there's a reason they're not submitting proposals, I mean, it's, it's worth asking everything, whether we do a survey or something to get to that point. But what I was going to say is, what's one of the comments that I was hearing is, it tends to be, in terms of why they don't apply or they don't submit proposals, a lot of it has to do with, we don't have the wherewithal, or sometimes it's simply too much work or regulations. I mean, there's so too many, too much they have to do. So I mean, I don't think we can simplify that, because we're all, we have, we follow criteria, we follow all the standards, all the stuffs, but they do mention how complicated it can be. That's what they say.
Thank you, Trusty Maria. With no further questions, let's do a roll call for item number thirteen. So we have Trustee Pierce.
Yay.
Trusty yours Wilson.
Yes.
Trusty Stoma.
Aye.
Trusty Sullivan.
Yes.
Trusty Vote.
Aye.
Trusty Mario.
Aye.
And Trusty Kane.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Item number thirteen passes. Thank you. Our next item to be discussed separately is number eighteen. So may I have a motion and a second on that, please?
So move.
I second. I was gonna say, Trustee, can I make a motion that eighteen and nineteen be discussed together?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion, that eighteen and nineteen, because it sort of piggyback that they be discussed at one time.
Okay. You, you can just seek unanimous consent, and if there are no objections, then you don't need a second or a vote. Do we have any objections to that?
No, no objections.
Nope, okay, perfect.
Okay, okay, thank you, Trustee, for letting me have the floor. I would like to say first, you know, I was looking at, I think it's actually item eighteen. I researched Robert Half, the executive search firm. Now, I couldn't find anywhere in this company where there was experience doing national searches for senior positions. And what I assume senior positions are to me are vice chancellors and the presidents of the colleges. Now, I do know that Lone Star does contract with LinkedIn. Am I correct? I think Mario spoke to that one time. We asked that question, that they, they were a search engine. It, it, does Lone Star contract with them? Somebody.
I'm not quite sure.
Think we do, because that had come up at one point. And so let me say this. Now, we're doing national searches. Okay, that's what, the board doesn't search, but administration does. And since I've been on this board, which is, was twenty eighteen, administration states that it has been conducting national searches for senior positions, and I'm speaking specifically of vice chancellors and college presidents. But in my tenure on this board, I have not seen anyone hired from outside with all your national searches. I've only seen them internally. Now, my point, as a public elected official, as the fiduciary of taxpayers' money, why are we spending money on search firms if we don't hire from the outside? There's no point in doing that. Because it's wasting taxpayers' money. Now, it's also a force to me to say that you're doing national searches, and we don't hire anybody from the outside. So if Lone Star is going to play musical chairs and hire internally, we'll do that. Don't, let's not hire any national search firms. Now, I'm going to bring this up, and I want this on the record, and I will send the chart to whoever's, you know, taking notes. I'll send it to Trusty Wilson, okay, so she can get it in there. According to Lone Star's HR department, information on the percentages of African American females in top level administrative positions at Lone Star, speaking specifically of vice chancellors and college presidents, the stats are as follows. And I got this, I think, from Mario in, in HR. From twenty eleven, the percentage of black females was eighteen percent. Twenty twelve, fifteen percent. Twenty thirteen, thirteen percent. Twenty fourteen, thirteen percent. Twenty fifteen, six percent. Twenty sixteen, seven percent. Twenty seventeen, seven percent. Twenty eighteen, seven percent. Twenty nineteen, seven percent. Twenty twenty, zero. Twenty twenty one, zero. And now in twenty twenty two, it's zero. Now, what this chart is showing me is that it's a trend of disparate or unusual treatment of African American female applicants. Research also states that African American women are the most educated group in the nation. Google it if you don't believe me. Now, my question is, why is it that Lone Star can't find one African American female for any vice president or college chancellor slot? But yet you talk about all you're doing about diversity. I'm talking about vice chancellors. And, and when I look on LinkedIn, I see black females all the time getting to be college presidents and vice chancellors. Now, I don't know why we can't find, Lone Star can't find a qualified black female, but they're so great. Unless it's something about Lone Star's reputation with black females, or, I don't know. I, I need to know. Now, we know as a board, we don't hire. We only approve the hiring. So I'm going to say the buck stops with the Lone Star administration. That is all I have to say about eighteen. Thank you. I'm done, Ms. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Pierce.
I have something.
Yes, Trusty Wilson.
I think with, the email Dr. Head you sent, as far as what happened with hiring the new president for Cypher College, because, is because I sent, because I sent an email, correct?
Yes.
In regards to what, what kind of search did you all do, or whatever? Um, and I kind of echo the sentiments of Trustee Pierce. It's been a decrease in African American female higher leadership. And if we're not going to be, if we're not going to go outside of our internal system, then we don't need to post a position. You know what I'm saying? Or, or even advertise that we're hiring for that position if you already have in mind, hey, this is who we're, we're going to lean towards, but we, we're just following protocol. So nobody feels like they're being left out or discriminated against. Is there no African American female that have applied for higher positions? Um, like vice chancellor or president or, or anything like that, that, that meet the criteria, fit the qualifications? Is my question. I know we hired, um, you know, Ms. Carlisha Wright, but what, what are we doing as, as, looking at the stats that were given? We're declining in African Ameri-, African American female representative leadership. You understand what I'm saying? So it does look bad on Lone Star College, because I've had people come up to me and speak on the lack thereof, female, African American female higher essex. So maybe that's something we need to discuss at a later date, or if you have some answers now to what's really going on behind the scenes. It, you know what I'm saying? So we don't get that rap. Because we have it right now.
Yeah, I'd be glad to talk to you, or we can talk at a, when we have a retreat. So we've, it depends on what level you're talking about. I don't think we had an African American female apply. An internal African American female apply for the presidency at Cypher. But we have a number, we've heard a number of African American females at the vice president. So which are our future leaders.
That are here now, because.
That are here now, yes.
They're not vice chairs, and they're not presidents of colleges. We're talking higher leadership. I'm not talking about a diversity person. I'm not talking about a D. I'm talking about a V. If we can hire a former board member, we can definitely find an African American female. So that's what I'm saying, how this is disparage and it's bias. You can hire a former board member, but you cannot find an African American female, and we are the most educated group in the United States? That, that dog doesn't hunt with me.
I guess we just need to figure out what, what, what's amiss. You, you understand what I'm saying? I, I don't know. And I think the reason why I was, I was gonna ask, I was gonna pull nineteen, but it was already pulled, is because if we're, like I said, if we're gonna hire internally, we don't, we need to say this is an internal position only. You know what I mean? And not waste money going to these search, search engine sites or hiring these firms to find executive, like, people to get in that high executive position if we're not going to really utilize or really consider the people who really apply. If we already have in our mind, well, this person has been at this college for this, they've worked, they've worked in this department, so let's just, you know, go through the motion. Let's not do that. I think that's very unfair in the hiring process.
Yes, Trustee.
May I have a, I have a question?
Yes.
Dr. Head, this three hundred thousand dollars, is it paid as a retainer, or is it, is it paid as services or rendered?
It's paid as services or rendered. For example, if we have a job, whatever job is, we will hire either Gold Hill or Robert Hoff, lay out what we want. They do all the work for us. In other words, they do the recruiting, they do the advertising. We will give them general criteria. They will reach out to people in a way that we can't do normally, that we don't want to do. They will call them.
Sure. I understand, I understand what you're saying. Okay, I'm just trying to understand how it's paid. So if, if, if there's no request for them to do work, then they don't get paid.
That's correct.
And so it's on demand. It's an on-demand service.
That's correct.
This is really a budgetary item to have in case you need that service.
Yes, that's exactly right. We, we have a, a good example of this right now. We've had two, we've had a couple of failed searches over at University Park for vice presidents. We've had trouble finding someone over there. We've had failed searches over at Houston North. And so we need a different look. And they are, they do recruit at a much broader, I mean, we're talking about recruiting nationally for some of these jobs. So that's why we hire firms. They have outreach that we don't have. Plus, it's just a time factor for us. It really is a time factor. Our HR office does some recruiting, but not, not at high level administrative jobs.
Just a suggestion, Dr. Head. I think maybe it's time for, for a review of diversity as it relates to, to the college as a whole. In other words, we're going through redistricting, right, which is re proportion our, our geography, if you will, our population based on, on these, this type of criteria. We have a chief diversity officer who has a plan. I would, I would really like to know what that plan is to address the diversity among the different levels of employees at the college. It would, it would really help us keep the eye on the ball if, if we could get periodic updates on, on what's being done. I mean, I think the last time, maybe it been a year ago, I can't remember, quite honestly, when we got a, a good report on that. So that's, that's just a suggestion and a recommendation.
I do, I would say for all board members, we have a process we follow in all of these. It's not, it, we have a couple hundred people involved in most of these big searches. And so what we try to do is come to a consensus and make sure that we're in agreement over who is the most experienced, who has the background that we need, who, it just depends on the job. So it's not a matter of just pulling somebody out normally. So I, I agree, we'll we'll get that report and have a discussion about that.
Right. Yes, Trusty Maria.
I'm sorry, yes, thank you. On this issue, you know, this is one of the questions that certainly can be asked similar to, to my fellow trustee mentioned about, we want to make sure that people do want to apply for Lone Star College, and if it's, they're not applying, we need to make sure, find out why not. But I'm not saying either way, I'm just saying, it's certainly worth asking.
Thank you, Trusty Mario. Any further questions? So hearing none, let's do a roll call for both items eighteen and nineteen. So we're going to do a joint. Yes, Trustee Pierce.
Abstain on both.
Trusty Wilson.
I'm gonna abstain on both.
Trusty Stoma.
Aye.
Trusty Sullivan. He dropped off, okay, Trusty Vote.
Aye.
Trusty Mario.
Aye.
Trusty Kane.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So item number eighteen and nineteen passes. Thank you. Our next item is financial report. Just before you mentioned something, Ms. Valerie Jones, we thank you so much for, you know, being the new college president for, for Cypher. So thank you, Madam. So it has nothing to do with you. So thank you. Thank you, trustees. If we could go to the next slide, please. I do have for you our financial statements for the month ending March thirty first, twenty twenty two. The first slide here showing in chart form where we stand currently on revenues relative to the budget that was approved by the board this past August. So as of March thirty first, we have three hundred and thirty one million actual revenues collected so far, and that is eighty three point two percent.
And that is eighty three point two percent of what was budgeted. And if you look at the chart, you can see, I mean, while the dollar figure, the three hundred and thirty one million is higher than the dollar figure we had collected at the same point in time last year of three hundred and twenty four million, we do have a larger budget. So as a percentage, we have collected a lower percentage at this same point in time, March thirty first, than last year. We are at the eighty three percent there. And there that we still believe that is primarily driven by the enrollments, because we did approve a budget, assuming flat enrollments. And we have had negative credit hours changes for the fall and spring terms. Next slide, please. On expenditures, again, as of March thirty first, we had spent a hundred and ninety six million in actual expenditures. And this is fifty percent of the adopted budget. So here again, the hundred and ninety six million, it is more than what we had spent at that same point in time last year, which was a hundred and ninety four million. But again, the board had adopted a larger budget. So as a percentage of the total amount of budget authorization, we are at a lower amount for the same point in time this year. So we are well past not well, we are significantly past halfway through the year, and we have only spent about half of the budget authorization. Next slide, please. So this is just the numbers behind really those charts and forecasting where we would end the year at. So on the revenue side, again, in tuition and fees, we had in fall, the credit hours as of official day was negative two point four percent. And actually, once we factored in the entire term, it was a bit higher around negative three point two percent. And for the spring term there too, as of official day, that was negative six point two percent. So the estimated effect of those two things is four million dollars less in tuition and fees that we expect to bring in compared to what we had budgeted, because we had a budgeted, we had budgeted assuming flat credit hours over the prior year. So that's that four million there. And if we could go to the next slide, operationally, what we do as we get to each term and we see this impact on credit hours, we do take budget reductions across all campuses and vice chancellor offices. It gets allocated out. And so we make the corresponding offsetting budget reduction. So that's where you see that four million dollars there forecasted in lower expenditures. Next slide, please. Next is, I wanted to give a brief update on our FEMA reimbursements. It's obviously been how many years since Hurricane Harvey? And I did use to provide the slide every single month. I stopped since, many months, we don't have any changes, don't have. So rather than say no change, now I am bringing it when we do have a change on the slide. And so here, slow but steady pace is we did receive in one point eight million awarded from FEMA. So we have, I mean, fifty one million total that got submitted to FEMA. There was a point in time where a lot of this was back up in the early stages of, right, one, two, three, four, you know. Stage five was definitely a long stage with FEMA reviewing a lot of the documentation. So we have moved everything down to right, stage seven is where FEMA has obligated all of the funds. And now then that gets handed over to TIDOM, which is a state agency. And from there, we provide TIDOM with basically, literally, all of our actual receipts to provide proof that we did actually spend that money. So a lot of the work now is on both sides, TIDOM and our side to provide. We have spreadsheets that are thousands of rows long to provide the documentation that we did in fact spend these funds. And once we provided that, then TIDOM releases the funds to us. So over this past month, they did release another one point eight million to us, and that change you see in eight awarded there. And we do have another, there's a large project that is grouped together as one thing that is getting close to moving. So I hope to be able to come back with that in the near future. But yes, we don't visit this very much anymore, but with some progress occurring, I wanted to share that news.
I have a question. Number eleven, FEMA deferred to Lone Star College insurance. What is that exactly?
So that is the portion of the cost that our insurance did cover.
Okay.
We submit everything, the entire fifty one million worth of projects and expenditures to FEMA. And then they deduct off of what they would reimburse us, what we did receive in insurance. And then as they review documentation, right, there are some items that they mark as ineligible for reimbursement. So that goes into that category. And then once they do award funds, it's usually depending on the item, they will reimburse us at, say, an eighty percent reimbursement or a ninety percent reimbursement. And so then that delta is what goes into number, stage nine there is the, is our cost share. So we do have a cost share in this. But so the awarded amount, that is the actual amount of dollars. So we have received sixteen million, six hundred and sixty one thousand from FEMA so far.
Good progress there.
Just while she's on this topic, we have received, Jennifer and I had three or four, maybe more conversations with the governor's budget office. And we have verbal okay to move forward on the flood mitigation plan and spend money on the, the, where the flood medication around Kingwood. We need to write some assurances, and I may come back to the board. They want assurances that if we build that wall around Kingwood, that then when FEMA does reimburse us later, that we'll give the money back to the state, which I said, I don't think that's a problem with the board at all. So this is money that we received from the state. And I think by the time FEMA repays us, or not repays us, but gives us the grant and the money for the flood, then we'll have more money. We told the state that if we received more money back from FEMA and insurance and everybody else, more money than we actually needed, we would give it back. But then that was before we knew about the flood mitigation wall. So FEMA basically told us again that if we don't build a wall, then if we had another flood, they may not repay us anything. So if we built the wall, then they probably would pay us. It's kind of a catch twenty two for us, but we, to be when we ask for money from the state, I specifically told the governor's office and told his budget director at the time that if we received more money than we needed, we would, it's a clawback provision. And there's nothing in writing about that. But I want to be clear about that, because the next time, I want to make sure the next time we go and ask them for help, which hopefully that's not gonna happen, that they'll know we're being honest and we're keeping our word over. I do think we're gonna get that money, though, for that flood mitigation. Then at the who knows how long it's gonna take after that. This is going to be about five years before we get fully funded. That's if we really push it from after the hurricane. It was August of twenty two, August of seventeen, when this occurred. So this is a five year, which is one of the many reasons why I think we need hefty reserves. If we had that again, that was fifty, fifty two or fifty three million dollars in damage. I, we need money to carry us through until the insurance and everything else gets like your house. If you, if you want to move into your house pretty quickly, you better count on self-funding it before, before you get reimbursed. So let's put it this way, I don't think we can count, we don't need to be counting on anybody else to save us initially. We just need to save ourselves. That's why I think we're in good shape financially with that. So.
Thank you very much. And also included in your packets is a construction and grounds report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you. Our next item is any suggested future agenda items. Do we have any future agenda items for next month?
Um, can we discuss this Zoom? Because I got kicked out right before the last vote. Is Link coming back? Like, I know he had got this Zoom setup.
We need to get somebody to follow up with you over Zoom, because we didn't see it on that site. If, we may need to we may need to check your equipment, if you don't mind. And then we can see if we need to upgrade your
Well, I wasn't the only one that got kicked out. So I mean, you know what I'm saying? That was a very crucial thing, you know. I just so happen to still have my Zoom information to where I was able to hurry up and log back in before I missed the vote. But, I mean, is Link, he's not here anymore? Or what's going on with Link? He on vacation or his leave of absence? Or, because I know he's, you know, was doing the Zooms or whatever, or the WebExes at one point.
Yeah, he's on leave. So we'll get, I'll follow up with you. We'll make sure we got whatever it is you need. We're, the plan starting next, at the next meetings, we want to move back to the board room. And I'm not sure what everybody's plan is about coming back in September. But we want to move back in the boardroom. We've had
I think we have, I, we did do a brief discussion in one of our previous meetings about returning to, to the board.
When was that?
But there's also option. When, I think that was two, was it two months ago? I think it was two months ago, right?
I know, I know trustee Sullivan mentioned it at the last board meeting. He read the statement you made, but we haven't had no discussion about it.
We're talking about as opposed to this room right here. Right?
Yes.
We've had, we've had issues. We've got scheduling issues with this building. Plus, we've had work on it. The, the way the law is, no matter where we are, you can still do Zoom. That's the way the law.
The Zoom, Melissa, the Zoom option will always be there, correct?
Yes, because of the size of Lone Star's district, you reach into the required number of counties that in order to have a meeting with a board member attending remotely, all you need is to have the chair present in the location where the meeting was noticed.
Right.
So the issue is, we're moving back to the boardroom, not, that's the only all in person.
Right. All this, you see right here, we have to bring this in, especially when it's outfitted over there. Our IT group would be happy. And then it allows us, it's tying up this, it ties up this room a lot in our scheduling. So.
Okay, so chancellor and madam chair, so you're not saying, you can't stop the Zoom meetings. I mean, that, that's law. But that's not what you're saying, right?
No.
You're just saying that you're gonna move the meetings where you are now to another area, but board members have the option of Zoom.
Yes, that's, there's always the option of Zoom there. So that's
That's all I was concerned about, because you know, by law, you cannot force people to go face to face.
And that is correct. So we're not changing.
Just wanted to be sure, just wanted to be sure that I had it correct.
That's all right. You do have it correct. So nothing here in discussion, but we discussed in our previous or talked about, nothing has, has to do with, you know, folks forcing folks to come in in person. The law is there to have two options, one in person and virtually, and it would remain there as long as the law is, you know, in place. So I want to make sure and clarify this. Any other future suggested items? So hearing none, it is six forty five PM and the chair adjourns meeting. Thank you.